I'll call this study session to order. We have two items on our agenda. I see everyone is present. Shall we start with our first item on the agenda, which is the billboards? Yes, actually, before I do that, let's go ahead and take call roll. I'm sorry, Madam Card.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Councilmember Benia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
And Mayor Goofle.
Here. Excellent. And with that, we're all here. I'll turn it over to Sean Mason for presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. There will be at least a two, maybe three-person presentation tonight on this item with Drew and Kathy chiming in at the end. Good to keep up here. So by way of background, the council recall at the goal-setting session, there was direction provided to staff to explore both tax and non-tax sources of revenue, potential sources of revenue for the city going forward to help it address its long-term fiscal challenges. Specifically mentioned during that discussion was a billboard program on the model what is done in San Carlos. Also, naming rights on city facilities. Since the meeting, a couple of other potential sources have come to staff's attention, including advertisements on buildings and the sale of some city lots. So with respect to the billboard lease program, this is a program that's underway and uses the city of San Carlos. Before getting into some of the rules and the details, I wanted to define a couple of terms. In the billboard world or in the legal world, billboards are considered off-site signs. They advertise products or services that are not provided on this property on which the sign is located. And the typical arrangement is for the sign company to enter into leases with the landowner. In San Carlos and in most suburban communities, billboards are prohibited in the sign ordinance. But in San Carlos, they do make an exception for the location of billboards on land owned or leased by the city. When this was first brought to the attention of staff, I did express some concern about a couple of potential legal challenges to this program, including an antitrust concern, that is, the city is sort of establishing monopoly in this area of economic activity. And then some First Amendment concerns. As I explained in the staff report, not looking at the cases on addressing these types of programs, we're not really, I'm not really concerned about the antitrust issue, but there do remain some concerns about the First Amendment issue. So that's what I'll talk about. In addressing the First Amendment analysis, the analysis that the courts use in in analyzing and addressing challenges to governments' regulation of commercial speech, the analysis is a test that was put forward by the United States Supreme Court in 1980 in a case called Central Hudson. And basically, any type of regulation is subject, because it does involve a speech activity, is subject to review by the court. And the test that a court will apply on this type of regulation would be, do the restrictions seek to implement a substantial governmental interest? Is the restriction, does the restriction directly advance that interest? And does it reach no further than necessary to accomplish the objectives of the ordinance? Broad billboard bans have been upheld in the courts. Typically, the governmental interest asserted, the substantial governmental interest asserted is the elimination of visual blight along highways to promote aesthetic or end traffic safety concerns. And that has been held by the courts to be a substantial governmental interest. Billboard bans directly advance these interests. And billboard bans do not go further than necessary to accomplish the interest. So the concern with allowing billboards on city property, continuing to prohibit them elsewhere, but to allow them on city property, as is the model in San Carlos, there is a concern about whether the, if someone challenged that program, the, under the First Amendment, the ordinance would withstand the challenge. The purpose of the city's ordinance, like I said, most city regulations on billboards is to preserve the visual character of the city. The question within a reviewing court would be, does the proposed ordinance directly advance this interest? And arguably, it undermines that interest by allowing signs that are not currently allowed. And I'm concerned that there, someone might raise an argument that billboards on public lands are just as unsightly as signs on private land. In addition, if the city was to attempt to say, well, there are two interests. One is fundraising, and the other is sort of protecting visual character of the city. There are language, there's language in cases suggesting that introducing the city's financial considerations in regulation of speech would not be permitted under the First Amendment. Although there is no court, no court case directly on point that has concluded, I want to be clear about that. These are just concerns that occur to me, and these are arguments we can anticipate being raised. And in fact, these issues are being raised and being litigated as we speak in a federal court in Texas. There was a small town in Texas that had a similar program to the one established in San Carlos. And a sign company is suing in federal court, arguing that the regulations do not are not consistent with the First Amendment. So our recommendation at this point would be to direct staff to monitor that case and revisit the program. If the city succeeds in defending, the Texas city succeeds in defending that ordinance, and then exploring at that point. There are a couple of options. The first would be to consider allowing billboards on on any property in the city subject to certain restrictions, such as size limits. There could be spacing requirements. So one every, and I'm just making numbers up. This could be part of analysis and drafting a regulation, but one every quarter mile or half a mile or 500 feet, you know, some spacing requirements. And then if that was to occur, if the council was to adopt amendments to the sign ordinance to allow some regulated billboards, the golf course property has been identified as a city property that has freeway visibility, and it could be leased to a sign company under that program. There is another possibility that the council may be interested in exploring. Business and professions code, section 5412, is in part of that code that addresses the business of outdoor advertising, the billboard business. And this particular provision basically prohibits cities from amortizing out legal, non-conforming billboards. So the situation is, at one point in time, and this is very common, these billboards were, many billboards, including the one that's in the city of San Mateo right now, were installed before the city prohibited billboards. The city then comes along and prohibits billboards. Unlike most land uses, most land uses under the, under land use law, the city could, as part of that regulation, adopt an amortization clause. It says that after the useful life of that use has been expended, then they can require removal. This provision of the Business and Professions Code does not allow for removal without paying fair market value. And so it's very common to see, like, our billboard in San Mateo, not legal, non-conforming, has not been removed because the city would have to pay for it in order to get it removed. And many of the older billboards you'll see in communities that don't allow billboards are in that situation. Well, this section, in addition to requiring that amortized billboards be paid for, also contains an authorization for cities and billboard owners to enter into relocation agreements. And so it is possible that a relocation agreement for the sign, the one sign that currently exists in San Mateo, to be relocated, reconstructed as a new, modern sign in another location, and potentially the golf course location to know by the city. So that's another potential option that the council might wish to explore. I believe that ends the discussion of the billboard issues. And I'll turn it over to Drew and/or Kathy.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I'll take it from here for the advertising on buildings and the naming rights. So as Sean mentioned earlier, this was something that was brought up as a potential option for staff to, or for council, excuse me, to look into. And so we're bringing it forward tonight about advertising on public and or private buildings with a commitment by the advertisers to provide revenue for allowing such activity. So similar to the legal considerations for the electronic billboards that Sean just reviewed, there's similar concerns or issues that we need to make sure we address with respect to this activity. You can see a rendering on the left there of an example of what an advertisement on a building could look like. And so if this council is interested in pursuing this, we would then start the analysis phase of what specifically the legal considerations are, and could they be overcome? And how we would move forward with an ordinance to allow this if council is interested. And then on the naming rights issue, that one's a little more straightforward. That's predominantly just a policy issue. And if council wants to pursue that, staff would return with the policy considerations, such as the criteria for allowing naming of certain city facilities and what that would look like. So again, if council wishes to pursue that, we'll return with all the policy considerations for council. And with that, I'll turn things over to Kathy to talk about the sale of property.
Sean, if you could advance the slide.
Okay.
So, you know, the city still has a few surface parking lots downtown. We've been approached by developers, and I will say they're by multiple developers. About two of our lots, one is called the Talbot's Lot, which is essentially behind Talbot's Toy Store between Fourth and Fifth Avenue. And the other one is the one we refer to as the Gravioli Lot, which is adjacent to the Ravioli House Restaurant, just further down the block along B Street in an L-shaped parcel. Both of these are very small lots, so I will say that they're primarily only developable if adjacent parcels are also included in the development proposal. So for both of these sites, if the city did want to possibly pursue development or allow for development on them, the Surplus Land Act would apply, which means that the city would need to make these available to affordable housing developers for a period of time. For 100% affordable housing projects, is our understanding, before we could put it out on the market for other use, possible uses, including market rate housing or your commercial developments. A further complication is the Talbot's Lot was formerly a redevelopment site. We originally planned to keep it as a government-purpose site for parking in perpetuity. But if we were to decide to move forward and transfer that for development purposes, we would need to enter into a compensation agreement with the various taxing entities, the county and the school districts. And we would only get a percentage share of whatever revenues, and our share of that would be 34% of whatever the revenues are. If the council is interested in possibly moving forward with developments on either one of these lots, there are several policy issues that would need to be considered. I would recommend coming back for an additional study session to talk about what land uses you would like to see entertained on those sites. And that also could include like what community benefits you might require, such as whether you would require a certain percentage of affordable housing, whether you want to see the parking replaced on site. You know, we are building additional spaces in the parking garages part of the Mid-Penn development that'll be before you later tonight. But those are primarily compensating for in-lane parking spaces that weren't built elsewhere in the downtown. So it'd be a question of whether you wanted to require the parking spaces to be replaced. And then another question, which we've discussed previously, is whether you would entertain an outright sale of these properties or would only consider them under a ground lease situation. So we're looking for direction, just to see if you want to even entertain this and have us come back to you to further discuss these policy issues.
So that concludes the presentation. So we've got basically four areas. We're seeking direction from council on the direction with respect to the billboard program, advertising on buildings and naming rights. And then the potential sale of the surplus, the parking lots downtown. Available for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much, Sean. Let's open it up to the council members first for questions. I'll go to the deputy mayor. If you want to go first.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question I have for the city manager office team is that have we looked into like what the, what the revenues would be under some of these arrangements? I mean, not exactly, of course, but like what, like, kind of are we talking about per sign or per building advertisement in general?
So we have looked into the arrangement on the electronic billboards, and typically what we've found is that that cities receive about 20% of the overall revenue. And as a baseline there, that typically runs about $200,000 to $300,000 a year per billboard. We have not looked into anything specific with respect to advertising on buildings or naming rights. That would sort of be the next step if we got direction to pursue that further.
Okay. And has, I know that we're preliminary looking at this, but when you were talking about the golf course, was there any idea of how many signs that that area could support, or was it just one?
Well, that would sort of depend on the, if we were contemplating installing the sign there as part of revision of the sign code that allows for billboards in the city, it would really depend upon, you know, the spacing requirement as to whether or not you could you could accommodate more than one. And that really, really depends upon how many, you know, how much the spacing requirement is set at.
So it depends. Okay.
If we're contemplating that under the relocation of the existing billboard under the Business and Professions Code, that's really just a one sign, because we're only relocating one existing sign.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Great. Other council members with questions? I see Diane Pappen.
I have a couple of questions. We've looked at San Carlos, and I was just wondering, are the other cities that have billboards, do they have similar ordinances on them? Because I think about, there's a few other cities that have one billboard that generates a fair amount of revenue, and they don't seem to have a whole bunch more.
Yeah. The only one that I'm aware of in the county that has this program that limits billboards to city-owned or controlled properties is by law, is the San Carlos situation. Now, it's possible that other properties, just by happenstance, like, for example, there could be a relocation agreement for an old sign that was relocated and upgraded in Belmont or in some other jurisdiction. So it may be that there are older billboards that were relocated and upgraded as part of a 5412 program.
So I so think about it in a different way. What if you allow for billboards, but you charge a significant fee that would help raise money? In other words, it wouldn't necessarily be that you would control it, or is there a possibility that we could lease land, put up a billboard, and then sublease out the billboard? Those are two scenarios.
Yeah, so the leasing of land and then and then billboard leasing it out. I mean, typically, if we were to lease the land, have a long-term lease, you would lease it to the billboard companies, actually do the installation and then the operation of the sign and get revenue, you know, that way. The issue is, do you, you know, require, legally require that the city have that leasehold interest in order to allow the billboard? If the city was to enact ordinance that allows for billboards generally on lots zoned X, pick out, you know, commercial zoning or industrial zoning, whatever, whatever the zone is allowed, and then imposes size limits, that type of thing, and spacing requirements. There's nothing, if that was to have occurred, there is nothing that would prevent the city from going out and leasing properties that meet those criteria, and then turning around and leasing them to billboard companies. I think the concern arises when the city is the only company, is the only proprietor, whether it be a lease or a fee title, that is allowed to engage. So if you're going to open it up so that billboards are allowed on certain properties meeting criteria that the ordinance then you would, the more cautious route would be to go that to allow others to come in and allow signs on their property as well, not just any property that the city has.
And what if, I guess you'd have to have a rational basis if you wanted to tax, if you allowed other people to do billboards, but you wanted to just tax them so that you generate revenue that way?
You hit on the magic word. We are under state public financing law. We are allowed to charge fees to recover the cost of processing an application for a sign, that type of thing. But to make it, you know, if we want to charge more than the cost of issuing a permit and processing an application for a sign, that becomes a tax. We can do it, but we have to get voter approval of it.
Oh, you have to get voter approval. Okay. So, all right. Yeah, because I'd be curious to know. I know Millbrae has one, and Belmont has one. And there's not billboards everywhere, so I'd be curious to know how those cities are doing it.
Yeah, I can certainly follow up with them.
Okay.
Councilmember, do you know anybody who could help us out with that?
Maybe. Play your cards right. I got, I got one more. This is for Kathy. You have to go through that Surplus Lands Act procedure if you are putting the property out for sale or lease. Is that right? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, because you said offer the property, and I didn't know what that meant. So, okay, so it's either or. Okay. All right. Well, I think that covers me for now. I'd love to see about how those other cities are doing it. I'd be curious. And then do we, can I have one more question? Do we know the status of this case in Texas? I mean, is it?
It was filed in September, so it's very early in the process.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Let's see. Councilmember Benia doesn't have any questions, so.
Of course I do. Many now.
Take all the questions you need, Rick.
Okay, thank you. Starting with billboards, Sean. Are we, I remember seeing a very brightly lit with like an LED display or something billboard along 101 in, I think, Redwood City where like Circle Star used to be. It was so bright, I would like hold my hand up and cover it while I drove by, right? And I wonder, are we talking about allowing that type? I mean, could we allow or could we ban and say, we don't want that? Will they want traditionally lit billboards?
Yes, if you do have the authority to limit the type of lighting, if you do want to allow for billboards to traditional non-electronic billboard, that was the interest of the council.
Okay, good. Thank you. Because I know that our wildlife are suffering from light pollution. And I think that some of those things are so bright, they could cause accidents on the freeway. So I'd rather avoid that, if we could. Interested in what San Carlos is doing there, and I would like to look further into that, because as you mentioned, our golf course is a prime location. You mentioned, though, one thing was that part of what we would have to do is determine spacing in order to be able to implement a policy where we would be able to put these things on our own land or any land, right?
That's certainly a, it's not legally required, but a fairly common restriction in terms of, you know, spacing between billboards to avoid clutter and several billboards on one side, right? So typically, that is a feature in ordinances, in legal schemes that do allow for the placement of billboard.
Right. So if we wanted to say, look at the golf course frontage along the freeway, and maybe we wanted to see if we could put two or three signs along that frontage, we could be able to do that if we determined that that was what we wanted?
Right, right.
Okay, good. Thanks. Regarding the surplus property, on naming rights, I'm only sort of okay with that. I don't need to have all the rich people's names all over everything, all over the place, all the time. I think there's kind of enough of that out there. I understand it's a way to get some revenue, but is it one-time revenue or is it ongoing revenue, Sean?
It did. That would really depend upon the nature of the arrangement that the city enters into with anybody who wants to have those rights. And that would be as directed by the council.
Okay, good. I asked that because like also with the surplus property, when it comes to the choice between selling or using a land lease, I'm always more in favor of having sustained revenues, and I like the land lease operation. Not that it might be or not be possible on these particular sites, because it's possible that whoever the proposer is of the development may want to consolidate other properties and build a larger development. And so I think that we'd have to probably determine that case by case, but I always prefer the land lease because of the sustained revenue aspect. The parking, if we had to replace the parking on the, what is it, the Talbot's Lot there, could the parking, the new public parking that's being built at Mid-Penn could be considered as replacement parking?
No. So that, you mean, that's a separate project. What I meant was whether you would require that parking to be replaced on site. So you could decide that because of the Mid-Penn garage, you don't need to replace the parking, but I don't think you would consider that a replacement parking.
Okay, but there's a different option. Okay. Yeah, I think it makes most sense to first replace it on the site. Right. Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions right now.
Excellent. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I have a question about the revenue sharing opportunity for the advertisements on buildings. And so I'm trying to understand why revenue sharing on buildings would be different option than the possibility of having revenue sharing through billboards, not on city property. I think that where council, councilmember Pappen is going and where I'm going is is how do we maximize this revenue opportunity that's not taxing our constituents? And so I'm really curious to better understand what the restrictions are and why, in one instance, we would consider revenue sharing on a building and not on a billboard.
I think the the legal concern is probably the same. We're talking about billboards versus allowing the advertising on buildings. And just to be, you know, clear what we're talking about, this is the type of Drew had that image, but if you think of LA, you go to downtown LA, there are these 20, 30, 40 story tall wraps. They actually wrap around a building that, you know, has a picture of something or advertised something. So there's a, there's a entity that is interested in pursuing that, you know, in San Mateo. And right now the law doesn't allow that. The, our sign code limits the amount of square footage that would, can be devoted to advertising purposes and, and these would far exceed those limits. And so the proposal is to, the idea that was floated was, hey, city, if you amend your code, your zoning code to allow substantially more square footage on a, on a building for this type of sign to be, to be placed, then in exchange for making this amendment to your code, we're willing to commit some, some amount of money that we gain from our revenue to the city. And, you know, I, I, I think there's a I'm a little troubled by the, the idea that, just as in the, in the context of the billboard, that it would require the amendment to our zoning code to say that you can do this if and only if you pay the city money. And it seems like that provision in the code is unrelated to the interest of having attractive buildings that don't create visual clutter. And it's that disconnect between, you know, the regulation and the purpose of the regulation. And well, we, we want to preserve the aesthetic of the community and eliminate clutter unless we make money from it, right? And that's, that's the concern and, and the basis for a potential legal challenge. Saying that, you know, you're regulating the use of, of buildings for advertising purposes for revenue raising as opposed to regulation in, in the public in aesthetic interests. So I think that, that concern arises in the context of the billboard program, right? And I think it also, same concern arises in the context of amending our sign code to allow for, you know, much larger signs than our, than our code would allow now.
Would, is, is that, is that legal concern true regardless if we were to put more sort of restrictive barriers on sort of size limitation or the specifying zoning or maybe distance from, you know, residential properties of a certain density or, you know, population density, like what, are there, are there middle grounds to this potential legal risk?
I think the, the safest option would be to to enact a loosening. I mean, right now you could put one of these wraps on a building as long as it met the square footage requirements for that are allowed in our zoning code. So it wouldn't be very big, right? You, you could, I think a safe way would be to loosen the size restrictions in terms of signs. Permitted signs on properties, public and private. And, and then we could put signs up too, you know, on, on the city facilities if it chose to. And make revenue that way.
Without the revenue sharing on the private property is what you're suggesting?
Right, that's right. It's, the, the concern about, you know, my concern about tying the ability to even do this anywhere through a payment to the city is, is the concern.
Okay, thanks. And then, and then I have a question about the surplus property and I've been in touch with Prometheus just as a matter of record. And, you know, I, I think I share councilmember Bonilla's reservations about letting go of our precious land resources. But I'm curious if there is a way to put a condition of sale that would require X number of affordable units to be deed restricted in perpetuity? Is that a legal option that would, would entitle us to community benefit through the form of affordable housing? If it were to sell to a private developer?
Well, we can put whatever conditions on it that the council so desires. You can say, we'll only sell this if you, you know, build a project with this percentage of affordable housing or you can say, we'll only sell it if it's used for a zoo, for example. I mean, you know, you can, you can put whatever condition because it's our property and we have the decision on whether or not to transfer it. So that would be a discussion for the city councils, what parameters do you want to put on it? Like, for example, when we selected Mid Penn, we had a whole request for proposals with the whole series of parameters that went into the requirement for whatever developer.
Great. And so, and that could also include, you know, parking replacement on site or, you know, or additional parking fees for, towards our parking in loop, you know, in loop program or something. I mean, so it's sort of unlimited, whatever we decide.
Right. I think the only, there's a kind of a procedural requirement under the surplus lands act. If the city was interested in selling the property to Prometheus so that they could use it incorporated as part of a bigger project with the property that they have an interest in. We, we can't just do that directly. We have to, under the surplus lands act, we have to say, okay, we're going to be getting rid of this property. We declare it to be surplus. Is anybody interested in buying it? You know, we think of the practical matter. No one's likely to want to buy it because by itself, it's not really developable for, for much and, and assuming that plays out and, and there isn't another buyer who's interested, then as Kathy said, we can, we can negotiate whatever term the council gives direction to in negotiations with the Prometheus.
And then in the case of a ground lease option, would, would that actually would that net, net actual revenue for us? I mean?
So it's very, a long-term round lease is what's really common with development projects. For example, the Mid Penn project, we have a 99-year ground lease. So it would really depend on whatever we negotiate with the developer. We could either get that, sometimes you get it capitalized as an upfront payment. Or you could have it paid off, you know, some amount every year over time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sean, what's the current financial penalty for violating the sign ordinance?
There isn't a specific amount. So the violation of, you know, is punishable by a variety of remedies from administrative citations to criminal citations, civil cases. If it was just a issuance of a citation, it first fences $100 and then it goes up the, with more citations within a year. But typically if we had somebody who was violating the sign code, we reached out, asked them to comply and it didn't, we might issue a citation as a first step. If they, if they paid and didn't comply, we would then likely go file a civil action against them to, to get injunction to require conformance with the code. You know, our code enforcement approach is less about, you know, money and more about achieving compliance.
Can we change the ordinance to make it so that it's $1,000 a day?
Probably.
Just as an aside, if somebody, if a big downtown building wanted to put up a big sign that violated the sign ordinance and they were going to receive a million dollars for having that sign up for six months. A hundred dollar fine or a $300 fine isn't going to do anything.
Right, right. That's why I said, if, if, if it became clear that the economics are such that, you know, the citation doesn't make any sense. Situation where we would either criminally, which we could, very rarely do, likely file a, a civil action asking a court to issue an order.
I don't mind the, the revenue either. Those are all my questions. Public comment? Let's see.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one more?
Please.
I've noticed in places like San Francisco and other places where there is some city-owned property where they've leased it to a parking space operator. And along the edge of the property, maybe a foot away from the neighboring property, they'll have a billboard standing there. Could we look at that kind of an opportunity too?
Yes, we can examine city-owned properties to see whether there are opportunities for billboards. I mean, I think the key feature is visibility to a major roadway. And typically they look for, in this area, typically they're going to look for freeway visibility. And I understand from earlier conversations that we had done a preliminary analysis of city-owned properties that have visibility to the freeway and, and I don't think we came up with much other than the golf course.
Additionally, I was down at the way southern end of the city. Way southern end of the Los Prados neighborhood, there's like a park along 101 down there. And it goes down along the lagoon. It ends up right next to Belmont, right next to 101. And I know that Belmont has, I guess, a billboard out there. I'm wondering, would it be possible that the city could put one up in that kind of a location?
You know, again, we, the steps to get there would be amending the code to describe what the requirements are, size, spacing and all. And then seeing if, if that is city-owned property and it meets those, those criteria, whatever they are. And if they, if the criteria line up and the city owns the space, yeah, we could, we could put something there.
Thank you.
Sure.
And councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on some of the concerns raised by constituents about, about billboards having some sort of relationship to community blight. And I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that that was a matter of public record and staff input that we could hear from your perspective and your analysis. Is that in fact the case? Is there an association between billboards and large dumping grounds for mattresses? Or crime or abandoned buildings?
I'm not, I'm not familiar that that's necessarily the case, that, that, that's the type of blight. I think people, to the extent that people have concerns, more the billboard itself is being a visual blight. I mean, they're not popular. Most cities do prohibit them. And, and it's not unusual that, you know, our city does. But, you know, to the extent that there are other conditions, I, I'm not, I don't think that's particularly been our experience with the billboard that we have. That it's, that it's an attractive nuisance for, for that type of, those types of behaviors.
Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to follow up on councilmember Lee's question. On, on our, I, I too received that communication. And when it comes to these billboards, we would be able to, if we so choose, if we had billboards up, we'd be able to say we do not want billboards that advertise alcohol or cigarettes or anything like that. We would want, would that be correct?
I know that, that there are, there are certain regulated industries that are subject to general rule, subject to greater regulation, alcohol being one of them because of its unique history in the country. But in general, a city has a hard time defending content-based regulations. So you can have a sign that does, that says X, but it can't say Y. Those tend to be difficult to defend if challenged. But again, there are these special cases. Certainly obscenity is not protected and can be prohibited. And in fact, there are state, there are state regulations of billboards as well that address obscenity and, and other topics. I, I don't recall offhand whether alcohol is included, but but, you know, that, that's that, that, that would be an area of concern about whether we could limit the type, the, the, the type of of product that's advertised. I suppose it depends on how much, you know, control you're willing to give to the advertising company who leases the land, whether it's a city billboard and the city controls everything. Or whether it's a, a city site that it leases to a, you know, billboard company and then the company.
So if that was a concern that this council wanted to, you know, raise or, or add weight to it, we would have to take that into account in the, in the type of arrangement we would be working on. Right? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, please?
Yes.
I'd like to say that with regard to the letter that came in today about the existing billboard, I went by there and looked at it today. The private properties uses there are, it looks like an auto shop, a body shop, a storage yard for old vehicles. The sign itself stands in the yard adjacent to a building there. There is no sidewalk between the fence and the street there. So it looks like some people have dumped some things there, but it would seem to me that that is the responsibility of the operators of the property to keep playing there. And if they don't like stuff being dumped there, they should, they should take some steps to make sure it doesn't happen.
Quick time check. It is 6:17. We are on the first of two study sessions. I'm going to take us to public comment still on this first study session, starting with Michael Weiner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I, I just, I wanted to actually echo councilman Bonilla's sentiments about the electronic billboards. And because we have a, in Central, we have a particular, we have the billboard in Central. And not only are we not really thrilled about it because it's got, it's constantly Coors advertising on it and it's a huge dumping problem. Like we've sent a bunch of letters to the city over time and it's a big target for dumping because of its, I think because of where it is. So I'd be very curious on what specific steps we should be taking and what we can do, what the city can do to help us enforce that because it is really just nasty over there. And, and I would hope the city does not encourage or allow an electronic billboard there because you're very close to to residences there, you know, Central being kind of the blended neighborhood that it is. As to the sponsoring sort of walls and stuff in the city, I'm terrified of what that might look like with revenue constraints the city might be running into, especially under COVID and a recession. So I would hope that would be done with a lot of public input and, and restraint, especially as it pertains to the historic downtown. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this item. Lori Watanuki.
I just don't mute it, Lori.
Lori, can you try to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. So in regards to this beer channel advertising, we've had absolutely no control over this Coors beer and it's been there for decades. And it has generated. And it has generated blight. And I think we've sent you 11 photographs of what we've experienced over the years. So I would not promote something like this near a residential neighborhood. Furthermore, the city surplus properties, the 57 parking spaces and the 40 parking spaces. It currently provides the needed parking for the downtown business. The other issue is advertising on buildings, which Michael alluded to. This, this may be incompatible with our historic downtown. And it would bring more visual clutter and affect community appearance and affect safety. The trend has been overall along 101, it's been the removal of the large advertising billboards that were incompatible with the surrounding areas. This happened in the North Central Neighborhood and the Bay Meadows Neighborhood. And the number of alcohol billboards has decreased significantly along the 101 because of zoning changes and the trend to build housing. This is an optional statement, but with the general plan review, we would like to propose R2 duplex low density housing on South Amflit between 5th and 9th, which is currently industrial. And that is all I wanted to say on the billboard situation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Any other comments on this item? Please raise your hand. If not, I will close the public comment period, bring you back to the council. And we will try to go through each of these items for recommendation. Should we start with electronic billboards? Thoughts?
Well, I, I would like to see what the other cities are doing before we proceed on this. With respect to Milbrae and Belmont. They have some electronic billboard, but how are they doing it? And how is it allowed and all that good stuff?
So I would, yeah, I, I agree with you. I think that if throw San Carlos in there too, San Carlos, Belmont, Milbrae. Each of them seems to draw significant revenue from something that doesn't attract any blight. Not, not a one of those three at least attracts any blight or mattresses or anything else. They seem to be very clean and I haven't heard any objections to the advertisements on them.
And what I'm curious about is that it didn't result in a proliferation of billboards throughout the city. So I can't figure out how that worked. So I would like to know a little bit more. So I, my recommendation is to go on a little more of a fact finding mission as it relates to billboards, electronic or otherwise.
I, I don't think we're going to get to the bottom of this tonight. And it's very likely something that we should talk about again at our January goal setting session. Because I do think we want to move towards a, an ordinance next year so that we can explore whether this is really going to happen or not.
Sounds good.
Yes. Any other thoughts on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to say I'm interested in exploring this. And I think there's some possibilities. We should just work very hard to make sure that we've become aware of what, if any, negative impacts that some other cities may be experiencing that we don't know about. Like I mentioned earlier, I know that wildlife is suffering from light pollution. That's why I really don't like the very bright signs. I mean, birds have been known now to actually change their schedules as a result of light shining through the night and some other animals too. So I'd like to find out what the deleterious effects may be and see if we can find some way to avoid those while doing what we want to do. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I'd kind of like to echo what Councilmember Bonilla said. I'm, I'm open to looking into this more. I'm very wary about putting up a sign that can be affect like residents and, and the neighborhoods. I think I'm more open, given all the legal considerations. And once that gets sorted through of looking at, at locations like the golf course, which is, which is kind of out of the way. But I think this is, you know, we're always talking about trade offs and how do we generate revenue? I think this is a promising way to do it if we can do it right. And I definitely agree with Councilmember Papin that we should be looking into all of our options and and figuring out how to do this right.
I'll just jump in. I agree. I, I think it does make sense to also pause this until we know more on the Texas case. But I think that, you know, going back to best practices and other models makes a lot of sense. And, and I would also, I would like to pursue options that are protective of the, of the historic downtown. But my, my leaning is that we, we're asking our staff to make very hard hard cuts and freezing salaries. And we are looking at serious revenue shortfalls. And this is a very real passive revenue opportunity that, that I don't think we should leave on the table. So I would like to pursue, you know, you know, the fact finding mission as broadly as possible with, with some caveats with understanding that we want to protect the historic downtown character and, and, and our residents as well. So, so I'm very encouraged by this, but cautiously proceeding.
Sounds good. Sean, is that?
Yes, that's fine.
That's good for now. Next. Is there another slide for the next recommendation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So advertising on buildings, naming rights. There one advertising on buildings. So amending our zone code to allow the large building advertisements. And then the other is naming rights.
Deputy Mayor.
I'll start things off. Yeah, in, in general, I'm a lot more uneasy about advertising on buildings. Mostly because I think that this is going to affect our, our, our city's residents a lot more. And I think it's kind of a, it's kind of a fine line between kind of some of those older quaint ones that you see, there's a couple in Brillen Game and old San Francisco, and what we could be getting. If, if we were going to be considering this, I, I would like it to see if we can do it such a way that it's on a building facing the freeway. So it's, you're getting maximum eyeballs cruising through, but they're not necessarily, they're not necessarily in our city facing inwards. And I'm also particularly worried about our downtown because that's where I would think that the majority of these things would be making sense. And I, I'm, I think that if we were going to do something like this, we should probably, and it's going to include the downtown, I would prefer to be waiting for the downtown master plan when we revisit that and we look at that a little bit more.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Papin.
I, I would concur with that. Except that when we talk about it with the freeway, I might add perhaps buildings that are along the train corridor. You know, just facing inward to the train corridor. As long as it's not bothering a neighborhood. I might look at that as well. But I think we're all on the same page as it relates to not wanting to have bright lights or advertisements, you know, just beaming into a neighborhood.
Rick, agreed?
Generally, I'm in line with all of that. Yeah, I don't think the, just off the top of my head, the large signs, even like what we're looking at in this photo are not in keeping with the character of what we've had downtown. I would think that would be handled as the vice chair suggested. Vice Mayor suggested during a general plan update process. Should hold off on that for now. And naming rights is a different question. I think that I'm not sure exactly what the possibilities are for that. I'd like to see some examples of some things and ideas of what revenues from that might be. But like I said, in general, I like naming things after heroes and historical figures that, that have done great things. My bet there. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I forgot to touch on the naming rights. I mean, I generally agree with Councilmember Bonilla. However, I do think that there could be some opportunities that, that we're not really considering right now. Like, for example, if there's an area of, of, of Central Park and, and you can name it, you know, Franklin, Templeton Grove or something. And, and it's an easy way for, to allow private companies to give back. That's not, you know, selling out our, our city's history. And so I, I think that again, like with all these, it's going to be the devil's in the details. And can you strike that balance between being tactful and, and smart as opposed to the opposite of that? So I definitely want to keep that on the table.
I, I'm in agreement with pretty much every, everything that's said. I, I think that there's a lot of potential for, for naming rights. I, I would caution against name, you know, renaming things that have already been named. Like, you know, there was at one point a discussion of potentially, you know, renaming the King Field something else. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, it would need to be, it would need to be case by case, yeah, in, in those instances. But, but I, again, I, I think we need to be very, you know, we, we are in, in a recession and we need to be looking at all of the potential revenue sources aggressively. And so I, I don't want to shut the door on, on any of these opportunities. And I would err on the side of a broad and deep look at, at all the possibilities so that we can make some, some well thought out community, you know, based decisions.
Sounds good. I think. Diane, did you have one more thing, Diane?
I'd like to get some sewers named after, anybody who wants them named after them. And we can put a little plaque on the ground. This sewer that's six feet under was funded by
California Apartments Association.
Say it again?
The CAA Sewers of Northern.
Whatever it takes. It'll show that they are, they're buying into the infrastructure of the city.
Absolutely. Okay. I think that's all we have on that item. What's next?
The sale of the surplus property.
Yeah, I, I would concur. I'd like to, I'd like to see us keep the land if at all possible. And so I guess that would entail though, if we're looking at it further, it would entail putting it out to a nonprofit first. Is that what we would have to decide tonight, guys?
I think for this one, I would recommend if you're interested in exploring this, that we bring this back to a study session and we have a more in-depth conversation about what types of uses you'd be open to on these, on these lots and any community benefits you would want to require.
I'd certainly be willing to explore it further. No question about it.
Me too.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I would just say, I generally agree with, with everything Councilmember Papin just said. But I, I just wanted to say, I just want to throw in there that, and, and I know that this sentiment has been conveyed before. But, you know, we are so lucky to have this land. And the only reason we really have it is because we, we started owning it before our downtown really started to take off and land values just started to get, you know, astronomical, astronomical prices. And really, I really feel that, that once we get rid of this land, there's, there's really little chance of us getting, getting anything like it again, especially in our downtown. So we just need to prepare, we just need to proceed with extreme caution with this. That's my, my two cents on it.
I, I totally agree with the deputy mayor. This is far from our only land downtown. We also own the land under the parking garages and under the theater, but but surface parking lots are a terrible use of land in general. A surface parking lot is, is not the best use. And so I, I agree with all my fellow council members that we want to retain it in terms of ownership in perpetuity. But we want to perhaps get more use out of it right now. That would be my, my interest. And so please bring it back to us sooner than later. Okay. Did we finish the first item on our study session? Onto the second item on our study session, which is the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Funding Options. And I will invite Sandy Council to join us and show us your presentation, Sandy.
Okay, thank you.
It was an absolute joy to be with you the other day at Montero.
Thank you. That was a lovely day. So this is Sandy Council and the Housing Manager for the City of San Mateo. And the purpose of this item is to get council direction on how to fund. Oh, sorry. Did that start? Did you, do you see my screen?
Yeah, we, we see the first screen that says Community Development Block Grant.
Okay, good. All right. So each year, the city receives CDBG Community Development Block Grant funding from the Department of HUD that's used to address the needs of low and moderate income households and neighborhoods. And then this year in March, we received an extra $440,000 as a supplemental grant specifically part of the CARES Act that Congress passed to address COVID. The city used, decided to use that 440,000 that we got for Emergency Rent Assistance Program operated by Samaritan House. The city also decided that 120 of that, 120,000 of that would be set aside for in assistance specifically for in-home childcare providers. Now we have been awarded a second round of funding, this time $821,000. And that's the main purpose of tonight's discussion is to decide how to allocate that. And then just to let you know that the HEROES Act, which Congress hasn't passed yet, but extra stimulus money is being considered from Congress that could also provide additional CDBG money in the future. So the staff has put together three options to consider. The first one is Emergency Housing Assistance. Samaritan House has substantially spent the emergency assistance except for the childcare set aside that we first programmed last spring. Although both the city and 4CEs, which is the Childcare Corning Council, has sent out several notices to childcare providers, only a couple of providers even started the application process, much less finished it. We haven't really been able to pinpoint exactly why this money wasn't utilized after discussions with Samaritan House, 4CEs and providers. There seems to be different reasons. There, there is speculation that perhaps the providers didn't actually need rent assistance either because they were caught up or maybe they own their own home. We're not sure if the household income was an issue. We do know there was reluctance to fill out the paperwork and so on. So unlike some of the other county resources for COVID assistance, including other types of funding from the CARES Act, the CDBG pot, if you will, is income based. And we do need to determine income eligibility to use these funds. At this point, both the city and Samaritan House are recommending that the set aside reserve for childcare providers, that 120,000 be discontinued and just reprogram those funds for the General Rent Assistance Program. And childcare providers can still apply for that. Meanwhile, the need for emergency housing assistance is still with us. And I'd like to point out that this, these funds can be also used to pay for utilities and mortgage payments if the household's income eligible, not just rent. And then with the sunset of the eviction moratorium coming up on February 1st, many community providers have, have shared with us that they're, they're bracing for this need to address the unpaid rent debt that's accumulated under the various eviction. to address the unpaid rent debt that's accumulated under the various eviction moratoriums. So what's going to happen for both landlords and tenants come February is a little unknown right now. Another option is to assist with childcare providers in another way, rather than that rent assistance program that we tried. One of the HUD has recently issued a waiver that might be helpful to us. So now, in the case of a microbusiness, which is defined as five or fewer employees, if the net income of the business after expenses is less than 97,000, then that can be used to meet the income eligibility guideline regardless of the other household income of the owner. And this is, this is a switch. Usually, we had to look at the income of the whole household, so we think this might be a good fit for in-home childcare providers. So the county started a program and it provided $2 million for childcare relief that provided financial assistance to cover any business expenses for a month, up to $10,000, and that program was significantly oversubscribed. And then just last week, the county augmented that program with another $2 million. Now, according to the program manager, even after that extra $2 million is allocated, there, it's estimated that there'll still be about 20 in-home providers in San Mateo that will be unfunded with an estimate of the unfunded assistance at around $325,000. So if this option is is appealing to the council, the proposal is to just utilize the unfunded San Mateo County list outreach to those providers. Now, this will require additional expense documentation, not required by the county, and 4C's has committed to to work with the city and do the special outreach to inform and assist providers to put together all the additional information that we need so that they can get funded. Another program that we investigated is supplementing the county's assistance to landlords who own small properties. This program's designed to provide up to $6,000 of lost rent per unit, up to 10 units. In exchange, the landlord needs to forgive back rent owed by the tenants. So this is another way to address that accumulated rent debt that I mentioned before. And the landlord in the end gets reimbursed for 80% of the forgiven rent. So they take a little bit of a hit, but they get mostly reimbursed. But unlike the childcare, so our our thought again was, you know, we'll find out who didn't get funded from the county and then maybe step in with our money. But unlike the childcare program, this program was significantly undersubscribed. As a matter of fact, the applications were due November 6th, and the county decided to extend the application period for two more weeks. They eliminated a number of the eligibility requirements as a way to help to spend this money. And I will say, though, talking to their staff, even with these changes, they're skeptical that they're going to spend their whole allocation. So this is new info since we put the staff report together. So at this point, it doesn't appear that this is an unfunded need based on the county's program. Also, with reviewing with this county staff, it appears that 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 income eligibility might be problematic for the landlords based on the ones that had already applied to the process. I'm not sure that they are going to be able to meet the income criteria that we need to use for CDBG. So if this kind of assistance is still of interest to the city, you know, another funding source like the housing, the housing general funds that we set aside from former redevelopment tax increment would be a better use, given that it doesn't have any income strings or And then finally, we have another COVID-related CDBG decision to make. We purposely left out about $220,000 of CDBG funding when we put our annual plan together for year 2020 to 21 this summer. Originally, this money was earmarked for the next CDBG Street Capital Improvement Project, but it could be used for COVID, to address COVID if we choose. We wanted to wait and see what the emerging needs and funding resources would be in the summer, so we just didn't make a decision. So now, our choice is to either use that as COVID relief, so that would mean adding the 220 to the 821 that we're about to receive from HUD, or we can co-put it back into the street project as originally planned. The street project this year is to start funding projects that were recently identified in the adopted Bike Master Plan, since many of the projects are located in the North Central Neighborhood, which is one of our CDBG target areas. Although we don't know what our CDBG grant will be next year, our plans are based on having about $800,000 over two years for this project. So if this money would, was set aside for that, that would raise it up to $1 million. The project's still in the design phase, so knowing the budget would help shape the final project. The proposed bike lanes are predominantly in, on Humboldt Street and Poplar Streets, which are, like I mentioned before, high on the priority list in the adopted plan. So we just have a handful of questions here. In order to get these funds out into the community, we do need to prepare an amendment to our annual plan that we already prepared, as well as the five-year plan. We need to bring that back to the council for approval before we submit it to HUD. So tonight, we're really just looking at budgeting, not details on programs. We can work on that later, but we're just looking for feedback on these key things. So I'll just go over them real quick. Do you agree with the staff recommendation to reprogram the $120,000 childcare set aside with Samaritan House? Do you want to provide additional emergency housing assistance through Samaritan House? Do you want to use CDBG for the, to supplement the county childcare relief fund, which is just piggybacking on an existing program and trying to fund those that the county is unable to? And do you want to look at a small property landlord assistance? And if that's the case, staff really recommends that you look at using the general fund housing program rather than CDBG? And then finally, do we want to reprogram, do we want to allocate the 220 unprogrammed money to either the bike lane project or add it on to COVID programs?
Thank you, Sandy. Okay. It's very clear. It's right there. We've got 10 minutes. Start with Councilmember Papin.
I just want to cut to the chase a little. I know there'll be questions. I don't know whether you look over public comment, but I I'm hoping we can put some numbers very quickly to this. When I look at some of the numbers here, Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be that the childcare emergency rent assistance, those would be 120 grand going back to Samaritan House to use to any kind of renter, right?
Right. That's in addition to the 821, and we have
I got you there. Gotcha. Yeah, no, I got you there. And so, so then that's, I'm going to skip one, and I would just want to ask about the childcare relief fund. If there are 25 businesses in the City of San Mateo, roughly, that are microbusinesses that do childcare and they can make up to $10,000 to pay for business expenses, is that about 250,000 of the 821?
It's 325, 325,000 estimated unmet need.
How do you get to 325 when it's 25 businesses times 10? Have I missed something?
Good point. I'm not sure. I I got that from, from the county, but I think you're right. We also would need to add some admin for 4C's to help do the outreach. It's going to take a lot of handholding and and time to do this. We don't have to decide on the exact amount. I mean, I can work that out with 4C's and the county to finalize this dollar amount. So, you know, we could say 300,000 now just as a placeholder, conceptually.
All right. So that gets you to 300. So I've used up now of the 821, I've used 300, right?
Yes.
So that leaves you 521?
Correct.
Okay. So of the 521, we could give that all to Samaritan House to help with renters, right?
Correct.
And then we could look at city boomerang slash general fund to help landlords, which is perhaps an easier way for them to overcome hurdles to get assistance, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we don't have a dollar figure there, though, right? I haven't seen anything, anyway, in your presentation.
No, I think one of the things I'd like to do is, once the county gets through their second extension of applications and see how it goes, we could get some more feedback from them on on what the likely demand and associated costs would be.
Okay, I got you. And then on the final one, I did want to let, you know, I've heard from some folks that they're not as interested in Humboldt and more interested in Delaware. I reached out to Sandy today, and I guess there might be some other streets that will be looked at as well in North Central. Delaware might be a better connector. So I just put that caveat out there. I like the idea of using it, though, using the money that's left there for the Bike Master Plan in North Central, which is a target area for the CDB funds. So that's kind of my thought process slash questions. To sort of move it along, because we only have 10 minutes. So it would get you 120 on the first dot, it would get you 521 on the second dot, it'd get you approximately 300,000 on the third dot, and then we'll see where we are with respect to boomerang funds and helping landlords. And it would get you 220 of the unused for the street repairs.
Councilmember Benia?
Yes, thank you. I want to say that I really kind of agree with what Councilmember Papin was just saying. I was very curious about this because I've seen this come and go many times over the years, and I know that the Community Relations Commission goes over this before it gets to us. So I took a look at the CAPR, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And so I kind of have a couple of questions. I mean, I'm looking at page seven of the CAPR where it shows, it's the document where all this this kind of stuff is really figured out, and that we 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 report back to the federal government what we did with all the money, right? So I see that over the period, we have helped 3,906 people, and it breaks them down by demographics. And I have a question, though. It seems like, Sandy, I guess a question for you. Could it be that we actually help a lot of the same people over and over again with this program?
And those are unduplicated residents.
I mean, year after year.
Oh, year after year? I don't know what to say about that.
Yeah.
It is unduplicated within one program year.
Right. Okay, yeah, I understand that. But I mean, my thinking is that with the exception of elderly, disabled, and handicapped, actually, probably quite a few of these people have a job. Do you think that's safe to assume, Sandy?
Are you talking about all the people that we helped with CDBG during last year or now trying to address COVID?
I'm talking about what CDBG does in general. I'm in full, I'm in full support of addressing COVID right now. Okay? But I'm just kind of bringing it up, and I know we don't have a lot of time, but I just want to say that this program seems to enable, sustain people to live in poverty. I'm interested in seeing if we can change the model around somehow what we do here in San Mateo to help these people get out of poverty, and that's all I have to say. I support the everyone, the five items. Thank you.
Any other questions before I go to public comment? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, I have a question. I know that there are, you know, many nonprofits that are hurting and that the Community Relations Commission has been asking the council for, you know, for a way to augment some of the tiny dollar amounts that we've been giving through the CDGP funds. And I was wondering, you know, is there, is there a reason that that wasn't on the the menu for potential uses for for this allocation?
Yeah, the the commission did have a hearing a couple of weeks ago to try to sort through that, and and frankly, most of the providers, no matter what their, their, their own services included, did, did pretty much unanimously talk about the need for rent assistance. Some of them for special groups, but nonetheless, renting, rent assistance was the theme. We were trying to, in order to go back and give money to, say, all those agencies that we fund at the small amounts, it would have to be separated from their normal program to make sure that it was COVID-related. I think we were just trying to be efficient in putting the money out and making the, one of the commissioners actually made the point that we wanted this money to have the most bang for the buck. So put it out big, help as many people as possible, was was actually a preference of the commission. But that is an option to go back and, and open it up and have more providers apply for it. It just seemed like a lot of work for the payoff.
Well, are we, are we asking questions or giving input at this point?
Just questions. I'm going to go to public comment right now. Is there any public comment on this item, recognizing that we have four minutes left? Seeing none, I'm going to, oh, I see one, I see two, I see 14. We'll start with David Fleishman.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. Speak quickly, be brief. I'm David Fleish, Executive Director for 4C's of San Mateo County. It's a pleasure to be with you all again, and of course, I'm here to advocate for funding to support childcare. I want to thank you for your leadership and actions on childcare issues that have demonstrated your deep understanding of the multi-tiered importance of childcare for children, families, and the community, and of the specific needs in our city and the county in general. I have three quick points to share. Lots of horrifying numbers these days being spoken about, so I'm going to start with the story of a single mother who lost her childcare subsidy. Without childcare, she lost her job, and without income, she lost her housing. This story I know because of a childcare provider who got in touch with me out of concern when the child stopped attending her program. It's a very small community we share. I just want to mention this fund would support family childcare, which is overwhelmingly run by women and women of color, often provides the extended alternate, in alternate hours of care that are necessary in low-wage jobs and for parents holding down one job. This also provides the home-based care that majority of families want for their infants and toddlers. I'll stop in the interest of time. Thank you so much for considering this and for your leadership.
Thank you so much, David. Christine Padilla?
Hi, good afternoon, councilmembers. In the interest of time, I will also try to just run through my points. We saw how the rental assistance wasn't ideal, wasn't an ideal fit for family childcare homes because of how unique they are and what a unique sector they are. But the way we helped structure the childcare relief fund for the county is very specific and very friendly with ease and flexibility for even the smallest childcare home. So if you are considering making a city version of the county relief fund, we would be extremely grateful. We know that CDBG fundings are sometimes very restrictive by nature, but if there's a way to do it partnering with 4C's, I think that would be ideal for the unmet need of the rest of the San Mateo County childcare providers. And I just wanted to say thank you for even doing the rental assistance. You and Redwood City were the only cities who did it, and during this time, that's so confusing. We just really appreciate councilmembers who are innovative and are willing to try things and try things again to to support and make sure, you know, until things are actually working. So we we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christine. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back, and I'm actually going to throw it to Laura Bent, who's a panelist. Go ahead, Laura.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor Gotos. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and City Council. I'm here, this is Laura Bent, I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Samaritan House. I'm really here to say thank you for the continued support on behalf of the the community members who have accessed the emergency financial assistance. I will say very briefly that already to this point, we've seen 10 households out of the many that we have served that have needed extreme debt relief, and we anticipate a great many more that are going to suffer as the moratorium sun sets. And so we were very appreciative to have the conversation with Sandy and staff to discuss further opportunities around the financial assistance for families, as we anticipate in February that there will be a tremendous increase of need for folks who have been sustaining this debt for for a period of time, and it will come to reality that they have to pay it off very quickly. So again, my thanks, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any that I can as well.
Thank you so much, Laura. Bring it back to the council. So Diane started us off by going through each of these. Are there any points of disagreement or agreement that we should point out to start out with? out with?
Or I'm ready to make a motion too, if you want to do it that way.
I'm open.
I second.
Do you want me to run through them again?
Sure.
Okay, so it'd be yes to number one, which is the 120,000 that's currently with Samaritan House for emergency rent assistance would go into the General Emergency Rent Assistance Program at Samaritan House. We would provide emergency assistance to Samaritan House additionally for rent in the, the amount of 521,000, $521,000. We would fund the San Mateo, we'd do a San Mateo city version of the county childcare relief fund in partnership with 4C's in the amount of approximately 300,000. And then we would, we'll come back and take a look at the potential boomerang funds to help landlords. And then we will use the remaining 220,000 of CDB that we have left over for North Central Bike Master Plan.
That was the motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you give us a roll call vote?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Gofolos?
Yes.
So that passes unanimously. Great job. And we finished right on time. Who needs a break or should we go straight through?
I just want to say one thing before we adjourn, and I know you all concur with me, a huge thanks to Samaritan House for helping us distribute this money and getting it to those most in need. I meant to say that before I made the motion, but I just forgot.
Thank you to Samaritan House for everything that they do every single day for everybody. And it could be any of us who need that help and they're looking out for us. So thank you, Laura.
Our sincere thanks to you for all the support and we're happy to be here to support our community. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. With that, we are adjourned from our study session and let's go straight through. Anybody need a break?
Mr. Mayor, we have to join a different meeting, so we will have to break.
Uh, well, I'll see you in two seconds on the other side.